Good morning and welcome to the March 3, 2021 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We are streaming this morning's meeting live on KPTS Channel 8. We're also on Sedgwick County's website, sedgewickcounty.org. You can also watch this on our YouTube page, or excuse me, YouTube channel and Facebook page. Commissioners have plexiglass barriers between them, staff are socially distanced, and we are also wearing our masks. During Monday's staff meeting, commissioners received a presentation on the Wichita-Sedgwick County Food System Master Plan, and you can watch that full presentation, once again, on our website, or on Facebook, or on YouTube. We know that severe weather season is fast approaching, so we have Emergency Management Director Julie Stimson here to give us a brief overview of the plans this week.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning. I am going to divert your attention away from COVID for just a couple of moments, talk about severe weather season. As we know, yesterday, we had the statewide tornado drill. Most of the cell phones went off, even though that may have been unintentional. It showed the system works. We can alert our community when bad weather is approaching. The National Weather Service has various topics and training scheduled throughout the week, covering various topics from lightning safety, tornado safety, flood safety. And I will show you on the slide the webpage you can go to for some of that information, www weather.gov/ict/swaw, which stands for Severe Weather Awareness Week. The National Weather Service is sponsoring Storm Fury on the Plains. It's a weather education campaign for the public, as well as anyone interested in storm spotting. They have various virtual sessions that is open to everyone. We had our first one last night at 6:30. It was awesome. I actually attended it virtually myself. Very informative, so I encouraged the public to please sign into one of these sessions. Sit with your family. There's afternoon sessions, as well as evening sessions. Again, to register for these, weather.gov/ict and then slash spotortalks. Severe Weather Awareness Week, there's a few key points. I could talk about weather all day long, but I do want to stress a few key points that we need to help spread the word through the community. We need to have multiple ways to receive alerts. A lot of individuals still rely on those outdoor warning devices to be heard indoors, and that is not the intent of the sirens, of the outdoor warning devices. They are not meant to be heard inside your homes, so that's why we stress having NOAA weather radios, cellphone apps, other means of communication to receive those emergency alerts. If you are outside and those outdoor warning devices go off, that is your clue to go inside, seek information, and take the precautions that are being communicated through either local media, through the National Weather Service, or any other emergency notifications. Our peak tornado season is April through June, but it can occur during any month, so it is always a good idea to be prepared. Take a look at your home, work, school. Where would you seek shelter if a tornado were to be issued? Another key topic I want to talk about is COVID precautions. In immediate life and death situations, life safety comes first. Seek shelter, follow COVID precautions as much as you can, but if it comes down to that moment where you need to seek shelter and you don't have a mask, seek shelter, and then we can come up with ways to social distance and mask. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there with the COVID. Never hesitate to seek life safety measures first. And then with that, I want to proudly display our new emergency management logo and emblem. We are embracing the all-hazards approach to disaster preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes with Tony Communications and my emergency management team to come up with a way to kind of rebrand emergency management, encompassing the whole community into a logo that addresses our all-hazards approach. So with that, are there any questions?
Thanks, Julie.
All right.
You've been busy, and I know the test went yesterday, and I think all of our cell phones, I'm sure, went off about 10:15, whatever it was.
Yes.
A little bit of air, apparently. I forgot to say test.
The cellphone notifications were not supposed to be part of the drill. There was a software glitch with the National Weather Service and the cellphone providers, and it actually did push through, which is what we want to happen in a real emergency. But for the drill, that was not supposed to happen. But we did, we were able to check a box that that system does work the way it's intended to.
Okay. Well, thanks for bringing this nice weather with you today.
Yes. Hopefully, we can keep it.
Since you're talking about weather. Yeah, very nice.
All right, thank you.
I don't see any other comments, so thank you, Julie. Thanks for all you do and your staff.
Thank you.
All right, and then on the agenda this morning, we have meeting minutes, a number of board appointments, there is a COVID-19 vaccine update, and then you'll receive a review of the board of bids and contracts. So with that, Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Appreciate it. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for being here again today. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 3, Board of Sedgwick County Commission meeting. And thanks to all of you that are watching on KPTS and Facebook Live and our YouTube channel. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We, I think, do we have one person signed up to address us? But maybe first of all, we also had one electronic email, I recall, and so we can make a motion to receive and file that, that one email we received.
Second.
And a second for the email received.
Mr. Turpin.
I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Dennis, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did print out all of the written comments that we're going to vote on, and some of them have nothing to do with Sedgwick County, but there are a few that our staff probably needs to address rather than us. So I agree with the receive and file, but I think our staff needs to take a look at some of these and provide answers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Commissioner, for pointing that out. You know, there are some that are kind of outside our area and others that we need to address. So there's a motion and a second to receive and file the electronic messages we received. No other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And we also have one person signed up to address us personally. It's on my phone.
She is rescheduled, I believe, sir. Is that correct? That's a reschedule, sir.
Oh, it is a reschedule. Okay, all right. So we do not have anybody on the public agenda address. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of February 3, 2021.
If it's all right, if it pleases the commission, we can take item A and B together, which would be the minutes of February 3 and the minutes of a regular meeting on February 8, or a special meeting on February 8. Sorry about that. So I'll make a motion to approve both minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or corrections? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner. Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, resolution appointing Jeff Lawrence to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mike Papun.
Good morning, Chairman, County Commissioners. Mike Papun, County Counselor. Item C is Commissioner Lopez's appointment to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. This is a 15-member board. Each of the commissioners has three appointments to this board. This board advises com care and the commissioners on issues relating to mental health, resolutions in proper form, and I'd ask that you approve the resolution appointing Mr. Lawrence to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
I really want to thank Jeff for stepping up and being on this board. This is such an important one, so I make a motion that we approve this.
Second that. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, resolution appointing Kara Sumner to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If it pleases the commission, we can handle items D, E, F, and G all together because they all involve the same board and four separate appointments to this board. This is the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. By way of just very brief history, both the Mental Health Advisory Board and this board each contain 15 members, three appointments by each county commissioners, and previous to 1986, these boards were actually governing boards, and Sedgwick County back then got special legislation to make these advisory boards. Item D is the appointment of Kara Sumner to this board. This is Commissioner Howell's appointment. Item E is the reappointment of Peggy O'Donnell, Chairman Meitzner's appointment to this board. Item F is a reappointment of Grace Neal, again Chairman Meitzner's appointment to this board. And item G is Commissioner Cruz's reappointment of Dave Jones to this board. All four of these resolutions are in proper form, and we'd ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Papun. Each of us have a, well, three of us have appointments here. Any comments? Or I don't see any. I'll just, I'll make, oh, Commissioner Howell.
I just wanted to say Kara Sumner, I'm putting on this mask, and if you put on the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, she's reached out to me numerous times. She's very caring, and I think she's going to be, she'll be a very, very good member on this board. So I just want to say, I'm looking forward to having her on this board and appreciate her support and her service to the county. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll just comment that I thank you to Peggy O'Donnell and Grace Neal and Dave Jones for agreeing to continue to be reappointed. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve items D, E, F, and G for this board appointment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't have any. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, that takes care, and now we're going into new business. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item H, COVID-19 vaccine update.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoles, County Manager. We have three items under this agenda item this morning, a lot of moving pieces and change with vaccinations. The first part will be our usual update for you and the public regarding operational status of vaccination. Tim is here to provide that, and Adrian is on the phone as well. The second part, what is, as you are aware, we are servicing now vaccinating 65 and above healthcare workers and K-12 teachers. We are now into our second week of vaccinating 65 and above, or we're getting ready to enter into our second week, and it's time to look at the phase plan of the state of Kansas and determine now by occupation grouping, Phase II vaccination strategies. Dr. Minz and a group that he has worked with has been looking at this clearly for several weeks. We didn't wait till now, but it's time to implement soon. So we have a, Dr. Minz is here today to present a vaccination strategy for these occupation groups, so we will discuss that today with the public and yourself. Based on how that discussion goes, we have the modeling ready to put these work, these occupational groups into our COVID vaccination model and begin to estimate times of when people can expect vaccinations based on the amount of vaccinations we expect to receive. So we will watch, we will go through this discussion today, and the commission can take a look at this. And then the third component is Adrian is going to talk about volunteers at the mega site, how it's going, some of the challenges, and answer any questions that the commission may have on that as well. So with that, we'll turn it over to Tim and get the discussion started.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim.
Good morning, Tim.
Deputy County Manager. We have some statistics from last week, so Monday, these are Monday-to-Monday dates. We vaccinated 6,609 people receiving their first dose at our vaccine clinic now at 223 South Main. We had 3,951 people receive their second dose, so we dispensed 10,000 doses. And so two factors to remember about these numbers. The first doses, we were in 223 South Main for the first time. So especially on Monday, as we opened up, we didn't have a full day of appointments, and we ramped up throughout the course of the week, and we've continued to increase the number of appointments available. Even this week, we've added more appointments this week, and we're adding appointments for next week as well. So we're continuing to increase the number of folks that we have through there. And the second dose number is always a factor of the number of doses that we gave as first doses two weeks prior, and three weeks prior. And so that's, if you'll remember, that was part of that cold snap as well, so that number suppressed a little bit. But if you take the numbers that we've done last week, the total numbers, we've dispensed 48,425 doses through the county health department, and we have given second doses to 16,011 individuals, so they're considered fully vaccinated. So that's some significant progress, and this week, we are continuing to vaccinate, as Tom said, our folks that are over the age of 65, people that are healthcare associated workers, K-12 school personnel, as the governor directed. And then the other significant change that we've seen is that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine received its EUA approval on, over the weekend, and the state has notified us that we're going to receive 3,800 doses this week, and so we're working with Dr. Minz to make the best use of that. KDHE hasn't provided much guidance yet on how they anticipate that health departments use that, so we're looking for any information that they offer, and then, of course, we'll have Dr. Minz provide us some recommendation and direction on how to use that. It is approved. It's been tested against the new variants, and so there are some advantages in that regard. It is not a second-class vaccination in any way. It is a one-dose vaccination, and so there's some appeal with that, and I think we're all very excited to have an additional vaccine opportunity come into the community. And as I said, we continue to vaccinate individuals over the age of 65 and older, and we are adding more appointments each day because we've had a great deal of success so far at 223 South Main. Lots of compliments from the community, folks that have been through there, and we've been very pleased with the setup and the throughput. So we're going to continue to inch up the number of folks that we vaccinate each day at that location. We are working with the school districts and a number of other providers to do vaccinations for K-12 school personnel, and we know that we've had reported back to us that 2,949 folks at schools had received vaccinations already, so that's a big chunk of the folks. And again, the original intent was, the governor's goal was to get everybody vaccinated by the end of March, and we're pretty confident we're going to have people vaccinated by the middle of March. And so that's a real progress to get schools back as they were in the past as well. Finally, a couple of things about where we're headed. One of the things that we've got, we have spent a significant amount of time on already and that we'll continue to, is planning some community outreach opportunities. So we're most efficient when we vaccinate folks at our vaccine clinic at 223 South Main. That's the way we can get most people through, but we also recognize that that may not be the best location for everybody in the community. So we're working with GIS. We've mapped out all of the pharmacies that have been identified as partner pharmacies, and we've also overlaid that map with data that we have related to where infection rates have been high, and so we're going to try and focus our efforts, outreach efforts, in those areas. And ultimately, our intent is to get a broad distribution of mobile sites or partner sites across the community, much like we've done with testing, but we're using some data to help us determine how to make those locations. And as Tom mentioned, we've talked now about what's next in Phase II, and Phase II, we've started by age, and we're now vaccinating 65 and older. We know that we'll get through that population in the next three to four weeks, we believe. And so what's next? And so I think Kate's got a document that she's going to bring up that shows what's next, and this is the document that Tom mentioned, Dr. Minz and a group of people have been working on. And again, the goal is to keep the infection rate down. It is to keep patients out of the hospital and to minimize the impact on the local economy. And so Phase II includes over a million people across the state. We know that it's a very large number here in Sedgwick County, and after we work through the folks that are in the age 65 and older group, we have identified three different subgroups in Phase II. Phase II-A includes veterinarians. I know there's been questions about them. Some public safety, childcare workers, aviation and manufacturing plants, meat processing plants, transportation. And then there's also a third category. So we've, in Phase II, we've got those folks age 65 and older. We've got people that work in high-contact, critical infrastructure industries, and then there's folks that are in congregate settings. And so we anticipate that we'll use the vaccine clinic, for the most part, for folks that are in those high-critical employment sectors, in addition to doing some outreach stuff. Congregate setting vaccinations are probably going to happen on-site, and so those will be mobile. And so as we're opening up opportunities for people to schedule at the vaccine clinic, we're also going to be working in some congregate settings, and we'll do that throughout, you'll see that throughout the rest of the presentation, that we're going to address those congregate settings as we address folks at the vaccine clinic. I don't know what's going on, Kate. Thank you. In Phase II-B, we've got postal service and Department of Motor Vehicles individuals. We've got higher ed, and so that's a change a little bit from, they were previously, many of them were in Phase III. They've been moved into Phase II clergy, and then again, congregate settings. And then in Phase II-C, we've got private package and postal delivery folks. Postal delivery were included in II-B, but other folks that are delivering packages, grocery store and food service, so that's another big group, agriculture, and then other retail, other industry and retail sales. So there's a couple of large groups there, and then congregate settings again. And we've invited Dr. Minz to be here so that if there, we assume there would be some questions by you if there were, and so we've invited Dr. Minz, and I'm going to let him come to the podium if you've got questions for him.
Okay. So Tim, you know, in the state Phase II, all of those categories, are all those categories included in this, II-A, B, and C?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, from that. So, all right, so we don't need reference back to that, so we're looking at these. Thank you. And before we get into that, I just want to comment real quick. When you do the weekly update, that first slide where you show what happens to the week, could you maybe add cumulative total?
Absolutely.
Because the public will be looking at that thinking, oh, we've only done 10,500. That's a good slide, but the week and to date.
Yes, sir. We'll get to date, and again, to.
You gave it to us verbally, but.
For anybody that's listening that missed it, that to-date number is 48,425 doses, and we've given 16,011 second doses, so that's the fully vaccinated number.
Okay.
And we'll get that on the slide next time.
All right, thank you.
And while we're qualifying, Chairman, these are county numbers only. We know there are other vaccinations going on in the community, so this is just when the public sees it, it's only what the county is.
Yeah, and maybe make that note on the slides also. That would be good. Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While Tim's still there, before we get to speak with Dr. Minz, first of all, I want to congratulate the health department on what they're doing over at the old library and through the drive-thru. I've been over to the old library about three times now since we opened that up, and every time I've been over there, I've run into people that I know, and every single one of them tell me how efficient, how well-run it is. I get emails after the fact on people that have been over there congratulating us on what's happening at the old library. So I just want to pass on my congratulations to what the health department's doing in that aspect. Along with the emails I get, I get several that say that we're running banker's hours, that we need to run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and I try and send back emails to them saying, we don't have the supply in order to be able to do that. We are using up every bit of supply we get each week. So would you please tell us, are we putting anything on shelves and stockpiling it, or are we putting vaccines in arms?
We're putting vaccines in arms, and so if there is an instance where we've got more vaccine than we can schedule, we're working with partners and distributing that vaccine. So we're doing everything we can to get all that vaccine out each week.
Outstanding. Well, I didn't want that to detract, but that's some of the comments that I'm getting back. I want everybody to know how great a job that our folks are doing over there, the volunteers are doing, and that's really the story that I want to make sure that we get out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Are we at a point where we have scheduled mobile vaccine sites in the works?
We are very close to being able to announce a couple of those, but we are, we are still working out some of the very final details, but we'll begin those, other than the ones that we're already doing in long-term care facilities and assisted-living facilities.
Okay. And then the appointments available, are we, I, we had like 10,000 appointments available last week, or the week before. Are we having trouble filling those, or are we able to handle the phone calls that we're receiving? Can you just give me an update around?
We are filling appointments as quickly as we post them right now. I know that yesterday, or yesterday evening, we added another 250 appointments through the rest of the week, and those were all full this morning, and so we are filling, right now, the demand exceeds the supply greatly in terms of appointments.
Okay. And I know there was some confusion around filling out paperwork. I just want to make sure that we all understand that not everybody has access to the internet, not everybody has access to a printer, just making sure that we are making appointment setting and the forms that need to be filled out available. Can you address that?
Absolutely. Yes, we, for folks who aren't able to schedule an appointment, again, the easiest and quickest way for someone to schedule an appointment is if they have that internet access and go online and schedule that appointment. Maybe a neighbor or a family member can do that for them if they don't have access, but we do have the telephone line, the 660-1029, that's available for scheduling. General questions go to 1022. And then through the registration process, there is a document that is critical to have completed before you get your vaccination. And some folks who have access to a printer at home are able to fill that out and print it out and bring it with them. If they're unable to do that, we have a registration process right there on-site, and so that's for individuals that weren't able to either fill that form out or get the form printed. We'll do that on-site for them.
Okay.
It speeds up the process if they're able to bring it with them, but everyone should understand that we'll help them get that form filled out if need be.
Well, I appreciate that, and I thank you to Tanya and Akeem and the comms department for changing that and making sure that we have that information available for people to understand. I think there was a little bit confusion around printing things. Now, can you talk to me about volunteers? We've had some other concerns around people being able to sign up to be a volunteer, so I just, can we just address that right now?
Actually, Commissioner, we'll do that if we can talk about the list and have Dr. Minz discuss that. Adrian is ready to talk about that as the third.
Okay, great. And then just one last thing around, how are we working with our Century 2 partners? There was the home show, there was a lot of parking issues, so I want to know, are we sort of preempting that with what's going on with Century 2? How are we going to communicate if there is another parking issue? That parking lot is pretty bad, and when we expect, you know, seniors to be walking through who have, might have mobility issues. So how are we going to address that?
This past weekend was our first experience where we had a lot of competing for that parking space, and so we worked with one of the, we worked with some local. And so we worked with one of the, we worked with some local, other parking garages that are nearby that have space, and we're making arrangements with them to make those available. And so as we send that reminder email to folks, we're going to have parking information if we know that there's going to be a challenge. And we'll use our social media channels as well to help folks understand that there may be parking competition at the library site, and here are some alternatives.
Okay, great. I'm going to go tour the site today, so I'm excited to see the operation. Thank you, Tim.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I think Commissioner Cruz asked the majority of my questions, so that's helpful. But I do have a question on the printout. Did we get something added to the confirmation email saying that? Is that what happened, change-wise?
We changed the language on the website, and if there's still confusion about that, that's something that we could add. But I think it's pretty clear in the process that now that people can get that printed onsite.
Okay. If we keep hearing anything on that, could we get maybe just a sentence added on the confirmation email saying, if you don't have a printer, we can help you? And not just on the website? Because I've had, I'm sure we both had quite a few people who were concerned about that. So I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear that they can print it. Okay.
Sure.
And then can I get a map of all the pharmacy locations that you were talking about and that you were kind of overlaying to see where those were going to be?
Sure. I will make sure that it's in a condition to share.
Okay, yeah.
It's working status right now, but-
Sure, yeah, no problem. And then I'll wait for the rest when Adrian's here. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz, you had to follow up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So for those who don't have email, I mean, that's a good point that Commissioner Lopez brought up. But some people, I mean, I signed up two people that don't have access to email at all. So are we able to, like, and obviously, the woman, one woman said that she wasn't able to, they gave her a card with her vaccine appointment date, but there was no time listed on that appointment card.
There may be some confusion about those cards. That date is, again, with the two different vaccines, there are different wait times before you get your second dose. And so that's the earliest that you would want to get your second dose scheduled. And so for that individual, what we're doing, for anyone who's been vaccinated through today, we've been giving them a card that says, wait this many days before you schedule your second appointment. As of today, we will be scheduling second appointments onsite. So we will, folks that we vaccinated first dose already, we'll need to get them scheduled through the normal process. But as we go forward, that second appointment will be scheduled as that first vaccine is given.
So is there a phone number on that? I mean, I'm happy to help this individual schedule her second appointment. But is that something that, because you said we're just starting it today with date and time of second appointment doses? The people who haven't, they just received the card with the second date but no time. Is there a follow-up happening with our Health Department to make sure that those people have a time?
All of those, the direction through today was for folks to go back through the registration process and schedule their second appointment after that date on that card. So that, however they did that the first time, whether it would be through logging on themselves or the phone number calling. And so there are going to be a few that would need to either call 1029 or if we know who they are, we can work with them to get them another appointment.
Okay, so is there a way for folks who don't have email, who don't have access to internet, is there something that says they need a callback? Like, we need to make sure that we call them back?
I think if I'm understanding correctly, when they receive their first shot and they get their card, the instruction is, when it comes time for their second shot, if they don't have email, they should call the phone number that is available and schedule their second shot, just like they did their first. Are you wanting something additional to that?
Well, this particular woman called me and I scheduled it for her. So I'm just wondering, are there other folks that are utilizing friends and family to help them? And are they, if they're able to just call the number, that's great. I can just reach out to her and tell her to call the number? Or maybe I could log in and schedule her second appointment? So I could schedule her second appointment today on that date?
No, those appointments aren't going to be available to the general public right now. We're scheduling second appointments just like we do first appointments. We don't make them available until we've got that vaccine on hand. And so we open second appointments probably a week and a half or so ahead. So very near that date that that is on that card, that would be the time to go onsite and go through the scheduling process.
So what did you say was opening today? Did you say that we're scheduling second appointments today? Is that what, starting today?
Starting today. We've got staff at the vaccination clinic that will be scheduling appointments for the second dose for people who've already scheduled.
But anybody prior to today has to wait till a week out for them to-
Everybody through today has followed the same process from back in December.
Okay.
You get a vaccination, you get a card that says, wait this long before you schedule your second appointment, and then folks schedule their second appointment. And that's the way people that will, that were vaccinated from the 23rd of December through yesterday will follow that model. And anyone who gets their vaccination today going forward is going to have that second appointment scheduled onsite.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions. Thank you for the briefing. Just wanted to ask some clarifying questions. So this document you sent out or handed out today, are we opening up to these Phase, these Phase Two A, Two B, and Two C? Are we moving forward into those phases right now? Or are we still holding back to age 65 only?
We're at age 65 right now. And as we get through the majority of age 65, and just like we've done with other age categories, as we see those appointments wane, then we'll begin to open up for other groups.
So earlier, when we had estimates on how many people would be potentially able to get a vaccine in different age groups, we started out with, I think, started out with, I think, 90, then 83, then 80, and 75, 70. Do we know how many of those folks in each of those categories, in fact, did come out and get a vaccination? Not, not just what we know is eligible, but what percentage of that age population or those age brackets actually have received a vaccination at this point? Do we know that?
I don't have that number with me, but that's information that we can gather and dispense.
I think that would be really good to know, because there may be people out there that might say, I'm interested in getting a vaccine at some point, but I'm not anxious about it. And there's some people who are very anxious, and they want to be kind of at the front of the line. But there's other people who say, I'll get it at some point, but I'm not necessarily going to be knocking the door down trying to get this thing. So it might be interesting to find out. The reason I ask that question is because you could almost apply that data to the 65 group. Because I think you're going to see some, potentially some averages between those other groups and say, you know, even though we have, you know, 25,000 people who could get the shot, you know, in this category, this five-year category, we're only going to expect maybe 10,000 of them will initially. And maybe we'll get the other ones at some point in the future. But 10,000 will be essentially anxious to get the shot, and the other 15,000 maybe will come later. I don't know if we could have that type of analysis, because I think it would help us anticipate maybe a little bit better as to when these other phases will open up a little bit. Because what I've noticed anecdotally is, it seems like we've said, well, it's going to be a couple of weeks on this age group when we end up expediting the next trigger, which I think has actually been good. I mean, I've enjoyed the fact that we've accelerated our schedule. But I think that in terms of, we have enough age brackets now, we could probably pull that data and understand maybe the behavior of people to understand maybe when that these will open up a little bit better. You said earlier, two or three weeks, I think is what you said. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. When you said 48,425 doses, does that include what we've provided to the schools?
Those are doses that we have delivered. And so there's additional doses on top of that.
Do we know how many altogether we've handed out to schools at this point?
I don't have that data with me, but yes, we know how much we've distributed to other providers, whether it's schools or partner pharmacies.
I guess I would assume that the schools have been pretty reactive in trying to provide that to people in the school system that want those. In fact, I've heard in the news, I think, pretty much the entire population has been offered a first dose at this point. I don't know if that's a fair understanding or not, but I've heard that in the news. I think that for the educators, the first dose has been available to them so far. Is that true?
In many districts, that is. There are some districts that are still waiting to get the details worked out. I think everybody's going to have first dose scheduled by the end of this week.
Okay. That's good. And then, of course, we also know that our medical professionals across the community, there's a lot of those folks in the hospitals and things like that that I think have actually been offered the second dose already. And they're not, they're not in our numbers either, but we know there's thousands of them at this point.
Correct.
We also know those long-term care facilities, I understand, I read a news story a couple of days ago saying that they're largely complete as well. I don't know if that means first dose or second dose. I don't know what that means exactly, but it sounds like they're largely complete. So what I want to do is, I'm trying to speculate a little bit. It's maybe not scientifically, you know, we can't tell you the numbers because we don't actually have the data, but we're going to, because we're not ever going to get the data. So I guess in light of, in light of the fact we're not going to get the data, we kind of need to spitball a little bit and speculate perhaps what percentage of our population, in fact, has been given a dose or been given one or two doses. And I think that our 48,000, 48,000 number is extremely conservative. Maybe, maybe double that, for all we know. We don't know what the number is, do we? I mean, is anybody speculating what our total number is?
We believe that KDHE has that number, and we continue to have conversations with them to get better data. We're also trying to work with our partners across the community to make sure that they report information back to us as well. So we're pursuing that data. We don't have it all yet.
Okay. I just think that, again, it's not an absolute number, but it would be very good for us to kind of track that to the best of our ability, fill in those missing details the best we possibly can. I've had a few people reach out to me, and they're saying that they feel some anxiety about the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines, but they feel better about the Johnson &amp; Johnson. I know right now we're not doing this, but I'm wondering if it's our intent at some point to allow them to opt into a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine through our website specifically? Because some people might feel more interested in getting that vaccine versus the other, either one of the other two. And I don't know, I don't know if that's on the, if we have a plan to do that at some point.
We are continuing to talk about how we're going to implement that Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. One of the things that would help us if we knew what the flow was going to be as we've experienced with the other vaccines. Once we get a consistent shipment, it's easier to plan and make those kinds of offerings. And so as we see more, as we get more experience with Johnson &amp; Johnson, it may come to that, we'll continue to work with Dr. Minns on how we want to use that vaccine.
Okay. I think there are some advantages to that that might make logistics easier in some ways. I know that the cold storage and having a second dose and all that, this complicates things somewhat. Earlier, we talked about on the Moderna, we were holding back some of the doses for a second vaccine because we weren't sure we were going to get more Moderna, but we have received some since then. Have we kind of moved off that point? We're getting the doses out to people now, we're not holding back any of the Moderna at this point?
Yes. We're using that as it comes in and becomes available. Now, the first batch that we transferred to the schools, they split in half because we did not have a second dose to go with that first dose. And so they've got some doses that they'll use as second doses for the teachers that they vaccinated that very first weekend.
And then, thank you for that. In terms of data, one of the questions I've received from a few interested folks in the data side is, we know there's a number of people who, right now, should have received a second dose. They were eligible, they should have called, and they, they should have received it. But right now, maybe they haven't received their second dose because of a choice they made. Do we know what the drop-off is on people who, let's say, we give them a couple of weeks, say, after their date, give them a couple of weeks, they should, they should, we should come back and get the second dose, but they haven't for some reason? Do we know what that percentage is, the drop-off?
The only data that I've seen that I could offer any certainty on is it looks like, it looks like with the Healthcare Associated workers, it's probably a 2% to 3% drop-off right now that hasn't gotten that second shot. And we are following up with everyone, either a phone call or email, reminding them that it's been an extended period of time since they were eligible for that second dose. And so we're trying to figure out if they intend to come back, and if they do or if they don't, then we'll know what to do with those doses as well. And we're also working with Dr. Minns on some kind of a formula that will allow us, after a certain date, to go ahead and convert those second doses that came in to first doses for others.
Okay, that's probably most of my questions. But I am curious, is this document, this Phase Two A, Two B, and Two C, is this a work in progress? And we're going to continue to adjust this and fill in some details? Or is this kind of a?
We anticipate there's going to be conversation with all of you today about that. And so that's one of the reasons we brought Dr. Minns, was to be able to help that conversation go.
Okay. I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about the details of this at this point, since it sounds like it's still kind of being drafted. But I do appreciate having some clarity on this. Me personally, I would like to see us move, move into Phase Two A as soon as possible. I understand that there is, our strategy right now is to reserve that, those doses to 65 and above. I guess I'd like to, I'd like to have two parallel strategies. I'd like to continue to focus on 65 and above, but open it up to some of the other folks in Phase Two A. But I don't know, maybe as a percentage of our vaccine that's available, I don't know what the strategy would be exactly. But I'd like to just get started on Phase Two as soon as possible. Thank you. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, since we're talking about the phases, and I don't know if the question is for Tim or for Dr. Minns, but the biggest concern I've got on the phasing right now is we still have not addressed comorbidities. And I want to make sure that people with comorbidities, if they go to their doctor and their doctor says you have a significant heart problem, or if you've got cancer or some other thing where that if you get COVID, that this could be a death sentence for you. So truly, I think that at the, my position is we need to put comorbidities up in whatever phase we're in right now and keep them there. So I need some feedback, because that's the direction I'm heading.
Good morning, Dr. Minns. Thanks for taking time to join us today.
Harold Minns, local health officer. I think we all share our concerns. There are a lot of people that need the vaccine. It gets very difficult making these decisions about who goes first, who goes second. And our committee has tried to do it by consensus. There's not always 100% agreement, but there's consensus. One thing we didn't say earlier is we are following the KDHE instructions on what's Phase One, what's Phase Two, what's Phase Three. KDHE has dictated to us that we need to stay within those boundaries. We cannot move someone from Phase Three to Phase Two until Phase Two is completed and we are ready to go. Not only that, they would like to see the whole state move from one phase to the next, because they feel like if one county is already ready for Phase Two and the other isn't, then they probably need to shift some of those vaccines that county's getting so the other counties can get Phase Two completed. So as I understand it, in my contact with KDHNE, patients with comorbidities is not in Phase Two. It's in Phase Three, and it is not up to the counties to move people around. And as a matter of fact, if they start vaccinating people in Phase Three, then the state may say, well, I guess you have enough vaccines. We're going to shift those over to counties that are still in Phase Two. And then once they get completed, we'll all move into Phase Three together. So my point is, just like the state has made some decisions and moved people from Phase Three to Phase Two, the state can do that. So higher education was moved to Phase Two, out of Phase Three. They have made decisions about some other groups they've moved. So I'm saying it's not under our authority, even though many of us would agree with you, to move people out of Phase Three into Phase Two. But you can always make your case to either KDHE or the governor's office that you feel like there's a group that should more appropriately be in a higher phase.
I think you can identify those people pretty easily, because if they do have a comorbidity, they have a physician that's attending them. And I don't know if a prescription is what we would need, or some type of a note from the doctor, or some documentation from their primary care provider. But I do think that we, as a board of health for Sedgwick County, need to go on record and say that we believe that people with comorbidities that have a chance of, significant chance of passing away due to contracting coronavirus, that they should be at the top of the list. So I don't know what the rest of my commissioners feel on that, but I'm honestly ready to make a motion that we write a letter to the governor asking for folks with comorbidities to be included in the current phase. And I don't know what you feel about that. That's-
Well, like I said, I think many of us would agree with you, but we are abiding by the KDHNE orders we've received.
But if we don't take any action, the governor's not going to know that we have significant concerns about this.
And I'd say it's certainly your opinion. If you wish to- And I'd say it's certainly your opinion if you wish to do that, but we here do not have the authority to move people out of phases.
Yeah, well, I need to hear what the other commissioners feel on this, but I'm ready to make a motion that we send a letter to the governor asking for comorbidities. Thank you, Dr. Minns. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. You mentioned that there was a committee here locally who is helping make these decisions. Can you just tell us who is on that committee with you?
I may need help, Tim, naming all of them. I know that a couple of the doctors in town, Dr. Davis, Dr. Hagum is on it. I will say sometimes it's hard to get, like any committee, everybody at every meeting. We had Dan, what's his name? Dan Pugh, I don't know his title. Adrian may help us with those. So it was a group that involved with public safety and physicians and others that we felt would be helpful in making these decisions.
So I guess my point is you're not making this decision on your own. You have a group of folks that you're coordinating with.
Right. That's why I say when we try to make consensus, there's disagreements at times, but try to work on consensus.
So I don't disagree with Commissioner Dennis. I wonder, though, what these physicians that you're collaborating with to make these decisions, say, around other conditions that might, can you talk to us about that?
Well, other physicians, even ones not on this committee, have called me and said they're anxious to get a number of their patients vaccinated and how to go about that. And I've explained them the same way. As soon as we are allowed to move into that phase, we will certainly get those towards the top, because we all agree, I suspect, we would identify people, particularly people with end organ disease, like heart disease, kidney disease, end-stage liver disease, pulmonary disease, as being probably the most high risk of having a bad outcome from this infection. There's actually some literature on who probably is the most at risk of having a severe hospitalization or death on, in terms of comorbidities. And we will use that in our, trying to decide and giving the physicians, physicians in town which patients we think should be near the top. And I think we can work it out with the physicians, whether it's a prescription or that they just sign that Joe Doe has got heart failure, so we'd really like him to get vaccinated.
Sure, sure. And the other, the other group that I think we've all been receiving a lot of comments from is our law enforcement. I know I had a robust conversation with the city administrator in Valley Center and in Park City, and they have very small departments. I know that they're very anxious to get this vaccine. We all just received an email from a woman whose husband is a twenty, twenty-two-year veteran on our police force who just contracted the virus. And so, you know, I would be in support of writing a letter just to express our concern for our community. I know that a while back it was told, you know, a hundred and five counties can do how, whatever they like. And so that was caused a lot of confusion around the state. So I would be in support of writing a letter for both comorbidities and law enforcement.
Well, I think law enforcement is in Phase 2, and I believe that's on your list as the next group, next group in line.
Yeah, so I guess I just want to make sure that we're addressing these concerns of our community, because I've heard a lot of folks talk about law enforcement.
Well, all I'm saying is if we send a letter to the PECs saying law enforcement, move it up, they'll say, hey, that's Phase 2, you can put them where you want. You don't have to ask us permission.
Right. I'm just saying that I would like to, I would like to show my support today for the folks in law enforcement in our community, in addition to those with, with pre-existing conditions that could see potential hospitalization because of this virus.
I can assure you, we're working on very hard to get law enforcement as soon as possible.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. I'm glad to know that there is more than just you making these decisions. I think the community needs to hear that again and again, because it's not one person making this. This is a whole group of folks, and I appreciate that you take that time. How often do you meet with these people?
Well, we meet as needed. I mean, we met earlier this year, and at that point, supply was so limited, it really wasn't much to discuss, although we tentatively discussed orders. And then just ten days ago or so, we met again now that supply is better and we're getting better directions from KDHNE. And I would assure you, I would not want to make these decisions by myself. I need to have others straighten me out if I lead astray, or sometimes my decisions aren't consensus decision.
Well, thank you for being here, and I appreciate your words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I agree about sending a letter to KDHE. I think that's really important to, just to make sure that, that they are aware that, I think we all feel the same way. I mean, those are the, you know, the most heartbreaking emails and phone calls that we get are, you know, in that group. So I would really like to see that done as soon as possible. But what, I am curious, when you guys have these conversations, what data are you using? Are you pulling national data? Are you pulling more from local to help kind of guide those decisions?
Well, we're looking at what other states have done, but particularly at this phase, we're, we're looking at the data on who the highest risk are for death and bad outcomes. And we, that's why we've moved the age groups up to the top, because it's clearly clear that those are the people who are dying the most often and having really bad outcomes if they do survive. So the first slide, I think, showed what the priority groups were, what the kind of general categories we're using. So we want to try to protect the people at most risk of bad outcomes. And secondly, we want to keep the economy moving. And we want to provide those essential services like law enforcement and others, or those are the kind of three principles we're trying to follow. Now, some of those, we can kind of figure out locally. We can figure out what, what we need to keep society moving. And then there's even debate that. The ages that we're working with now are large groups, so it's taking weeks to get through those. Some of these next groups are much smaller, and it shouldn't take that long to, like, law enforcement's a much smaller group than the people over age sixty-five to seventy. So we should, once we get going on those, we should be able to complete them pretty quickly and move on to the next group.
Okay, that's what I needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple more questions on the same topic, but we have had significant numbers of people die nationwide and within the state of Kansas and in Sedgwick County that are not sixty-five years old. Is that true?
We've had some, but by far the majority of deaths have been at an age over sixty-five, by far.
I understand. I guess I would say, we can't, we can't say that age is the only determination, though. There's other, there's many other things.
I don't believe I meant to imply that. We're just saying that by far, the mass of people who've died have been over age sixty-five.
I would say this is probably the sixth week now I've brought this up, and I appreciate Commissioner Dennis raising the issue once again, but I don't know that I would use the word comorbidity, because I think that's too broad of a term. I think you know when there's someone who has extremely fragile health. In fact, I'll say, the CDC uses a phrase, people ages sixteen, sixteen to sixty-four with underlying medical conditions, which increase the risk of serious life-threatening complications from COVID. That's a good phrase, and I think you know it when you see it. I'm not a doctor, obviously, but I think when you look at someone that's dealing with stage four cancer, or someone that's dealing with some of the things you just mentioned a minute ago, we know that those folks, very likely, if you want to judge which one has a higher risk, I think you might say that they have a higher risk than someone who may be sixty-five or a little bit older. So it's interesting to me that on this topic, we say that KDHE is setting the rules. Many of the, many of the counties in our state have not followed the KDHE guidelines on this. So, for example, one of the things I raised, I think, last week was veterinarians, for example, there's only two counties in the state, Sedgwick County being one of the two counties, that have not allowed veterinarians to be vaccinated under the Phase 1A, or should say Phase 1B category. So we devated for some reason, but we did. And, and there's, there's these, there's these disparities from county to county, and our constituents are very glad to point that out. If we were truly statewide policy, it might be more defensible, but we're finding all kinds of things that are different from county to county, which causes a lot of political discussion, I guess. Back to CDC. They make the point, and I think KDHE makes the point that they're following CDC guidelines, right? The CDC says that they, they wanted to focus on healthcare personnel, long-term care facilities first. And I think we're, we're past that point as, at this community. We've already just stated that. They've largely been offered the vaccine. But after, on that, the next group, according to CDC, is, they call it Phase 1B and 1C. They use different numbering than the state does for some reason. But Phase 1B is frontline essential workers such as firefighters, police officers, corrections officers, food and agricultural workers, United States postal workers. A lot of things we have listed on our phases, 2A, 2B, and C. They also list, and I don't know if this is in priority order, but after that, they list people aged seventy-five and older. So I don't know if that means they're, if essential workers are a higher priority, or they're same priority as seventy-five and older. I think they're the same, probably the same. But we've skipped over that frontline essential worker stuff, according to CDC, went straight to the age category. And then they talk about Phase 1C is people aged sixty-five to seventy-four, and then people aged sixteen to sixty-four with these underlying medical conditions which increase the risk of serious life-threatening complications from COVID-19. And then they talk about other essential workers such as transportation, logistics, food service, housing, construction, finance, and other things. My point is this, KDHE says they're following CDC guidelines, and we say we're following KDHE guidelines. Why is there such a disconnect between CDC and Sedgwick County? I don't know.
So I understand it, and I'm open to my correction, but the CDC is recommendations that public health issues are a state domain. And so I don't think the state is obligated to follow CDC recommendations. And I believe these phases were set up by KDHE and the state, but I'm open to correction if I'm wrong.
I'll just say this, I would like to make a motion, we would send a letter to KDHE advocating for these people with underlying health conditions. I don't know that I would use the word comorbidity, because I think that's the wrong phrase. I think these underlying health conditions that, again, I think the phrase in the CDC guidelines actually is the right sentence we should use. I would like to make a motion, we would send a letter to KDHE, advocate for, I guess, their, their concurrence or their agreement that we should begin to vaccinate those folks as soon as possible. I'll make that motion, and then I have another, I have one other comment.
I was planning on making that motion, but I will second it.
And then my final comment would be this, if they, if they want to punish us for caring about this population, I find that very, very upsetting. And I think that would be, that would be, not would be what they would want to be characterized as punishing Sedgwick County for highlighting the fact that we're actually more aligned with, more aligned with the CDC than they are. So I'll just finish with that comment. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So just real quickly, I'm looking on the kansasvaccine.gov/158/data, and it talks about the total distributed, or total doses distributed, distributed, excuse me, in our state. And so I just wonder, and I don't know who can answer this question, but when we're talking about counties going from Phase 1 to Phase 2 to Phase 3, how, how is the state determining what the population is in, say, Ford County and Lebect County? Because it's not listed on here. They're just showing how many vaccines are distributed in that county. So how do we know as the public, when the state has determined what county has reached the end of what phase? Is that, is that listed somewhere on this site that the public could see? Because I'm not finding it.
I don't know, but it's a great question. And Dr. Nielsen has a conference call scheduled tomorrow. It'd be a great question to ask her when, how the state is managing and massaging that. I think we could put that on the list and ask that.
Because it just, I mean, it just kind of shows you what they distributed per week as far as vaccines go, but it, I don't see a cumulative spreadsheet that says, okay, Ford County received this number of vaccines, they have this number in Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. I mean, I think that that's a bit of transparency that this state needs to provide. Thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second, and I would, to clarify, I like, if it's all right with you, Dr. Minns, I like the language that Commissioner Howell has quoted from the CDC, the, instead of the co.
I'm fine with your motion, so I'm fine with whatever language you want to use.
And, and so we could draft that letter as a commission to send to KDHE and probably copy the governor's office if that would be helpful, so.
If you want to do it. Chairman, I would, the motion should include that you have authority to sign and send, so we could do it today.
Okay, okay. We'll do that. And then, so amend the motion to make sure that they allow the chairman to, to sign the letter. So motion and a second. Any other comments? And I have some questions after we get this done. So, I don't see any other question. Oh, Commissioner Howell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to apologize to Commissioner Dennis. I didn't mean to jump the motion. If you were planning to make the motion, I probably should have allowed you to do that. I apologize for doing that.
No problem. Thank you.
I think we both agree that this is important. I appreciate your passion on this, on this topic as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we all really strongly agree on this one. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Okay, so we'll get started on that letter. So back to the Phase 2A, 2B, and 2C, 2B, or not 2B. So I'm seeing, so these are not, like in 2A, these are not in alphabetical order. Is this the order that you're recommending within 2A? Because you're not going to have veterans out, or veterinarians out in a hundred.
Yeah, some of these groups are small, so we could mock those out pretty quickly. Other groups are quite large, and it's going to probably take a month to get through some of those groups. So we're just, we're working out the logistics.
Okay. So if I can go into a few of them, so we, you've talked about how important law enforcement's probably kind of at the top. Manufacturing plants, the thirty thousand, are they receiving their, their vaccines directly from the feds, or do we know? Or is, are we, are we going to be in charge of that?
I'll let Tim chime in, but I don't know that they're not expecting to. They're expecting the county to facilitate with them.
I know there's been discussion.
Spirit and Textron have the capacity to do onsite vaccinations. Tim, anything different on that?
No, the numbers that you see there and the things that are listed, we anticipate those doses will come out of the allocation that comes to the county. And then we'll work with lots of different entities based on their, their ability to do onsite. Or in some instances, we'll ask those employee groups to come to the vaccine clinic. In other instances, we'll go to them with some mobile.
Right, okay. Yeah, that reminds me, they're, they're ready to help assist in doing their employees, but, but, so we'll be the source, okay. Just for a point of comment, I just had it written down. On our latest hospital call, they, both hospitals and the VA, and even McConnell confirmed that they've completed their second doses on, on all of their staff. So whatever those numbers will be, I mean, you got to think it's at least ten thousand for sure. But everybody was pretty enthused that they had completed their second doses to all their staff.
That's a good point, Chairman. And we estimate that number would be somewhere around six thousand for the two major hospitals. VA would be more. And then the VA announced also that they had done, provided vaccines for six thousand veterans, which is also not in this mathematics. So we know there's more vaccination going on out there than just what the county is providing.
Right.
And to clarify, I think the VA is already, they can go ahead and vaccinate people with other illnesses.
Yeah, okay.
Which I think they're doing.
So the higher education got moved into Phase 2B. And because, so you just, you feel comfortable in 2B versus 2A in that, because the other teachers are being vaccinated? Was there a logic why that stays in 2B?
Well, I think most of the concern in education has been in K through 12. I haven't heard the same concerns expressed by higher ed about remote. I think those students can handle remote learning a little bit better than K through 12.
Okay. Thanks for your explanation. And then, lastly, in 2C, I'm glad that, I guess we determined, and tried to guess a number. When we're talking about food services, so now we've got restaurant workers in that category. So you feel comfortable that's in the twenty-two thousand area for, for Sedgwick County? I assume, through his sense of data.
The numbers, we originally had grocery store numbers, and that was just from calling all the vendors. Once we interpreted that, Dr. Minns helped us interpret that, that that probably should include restaurant workers, then Jeremy Hill from the Institute at WSU gave us the number of twenty-two thousand to estimate for that. Of course, that's an estimated number. It's a fluid number, but gives us at least a, some target to shoot at.
Okay, thank you. And I also think that, Dr. Minns, thanks for restressing this point, which I had heard through others, that if a county's, if a through others, that if a county's, if another county is trying to go into Phase 3, KDHE is saying, then you're not getting any more, you're not on the list of.
Until the others have finished.
Until the others have finished. So we do need to tread carefully to think that we can jump, although I'm totally supportive of our letter, but we can't just do that without, we got to be inconsistent with that. And finally, I have also been at the library a number of times, or three times myself, and I did, I just really enjoyed walking next to, of course, they were, they're the federal elected people, but Adrian's kind of walking through how it happened, and so I could pick up, you know, you first check in, and then they say, well, if you don't have your paperwork, here was a table with three or four people ready to fill out the paperwork. If you do have your paperwork, go get in line, and then how they, and I did see where they were given a card with a date, so they were getting what you talked about earlier, Tim, with Commissioner Cruz. So it really is an efficient walkthrough to see happen, and it's a matter of a few minutes through there, and then 15 minutes sitting in a wait observation area. And so I'm looking for, I'm glad that you're going to go take a tour and have them walk you through the process. It's pretty good, so.
So I'd like to comment, I agree with you. I've had a number of people I'm familiar with who've called me, that they initiated the call to just commend the Health Department, what an efficient operation that is, and how it's moving so fluidly and friendly and everything. But I'd also like to commend the Health Department for, this has become very complex. We get direct vaccine from the KDHNE. Feds are giving some of the entities in town direct vaccine from the federal government, like the FQHCs and some of those others, and the VA. So it's become very complex keeping all this in view of who's getting vaccine and how many doses they're giving, and how their programs are different than ours, and it's just, it's a lot of balls in the air right now. I think they're doing a great job at trying to do that.
And it seems to change daily.
Yes.
Not hourly. So we have a couple of commissioners with some more questions or comments, and I don't have the order right, so I'll just go with Commissioner Lopez first, maybe if that's all right. Or you first?
Okay. Well, I just had a question. I've had a few people reach out, and they want to know the difference if it's a bar that doesn't serve food versus a bar that does serve food. Are those going to be one, it's in Phase 2, and the other's in Phase 3? So if it's like a bar restaurant, then they can go in the food Phase 2C. But if it's a bar that doesn't serve food, is that going to be in Phase 3?
Well, we'll have to discuss that.
Okay.
Clearly, this is intended for food services that provide, my, on the front end, I would say, if you're serving food, you're in Phase 2C of the plan currently. And if you don't, you're in a lower phase or wherever you fall. So we would have to ask that specific question. While I'm on it, just to get back to process here, as Commissioner Howell brought up, this is fluid, but this is Dr. Minz and the committee's recommendation to you all. If you want to change it, and you've made a decision today to change it, you want to put a different group petition KDHE to do that. But once we leave today, this becomes somewhat etched in stone as we move forward. Of course, you have the ability to change it at any time, and so does the governor of KDHE, too. So we're firming this up today. So I just want to make it clear that it's not, it's not going to change tomorrow. Once we firm this up today, this is kind of the plan moving forward unless somebody of authority, which is either the governor, KDH, or this Board of Health, changes that we will move, this will become our tactic. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the process of this is going to be. I'm sorry, Commissioner Lopez, I interrupted you.
Nope, that's what I needed. Thank you.
Yep, nothing.
I'm good.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So can we go back to aviation and manufacturing? So there's an estimated 30,000 folks, and so I would imagine that some of those individuals don't live in Sedgwick County. How are we handling out-of-county folks who work in our aviation plants here?
I think, wouldn't it just, wouldn't be just aviation, any people on this list who live in a different county but drive here to work? It's a general question, not specific to it, but I'll.
You know, when we've discussed this over time, and I've talked with each, with Spirit and Textron, each of them have roughly 10,000 employees, and then we, with their assistance and with Jeremy's assistance, we know we have at least 10,000 more in the supply chain to those entities that represent aerospace and manufacture. They've asked that question, and I think our answer has been, if they come and work in Sedgwick County, and you're doing mass vaccination at your site, we're going to vaccinate them. So if someone of authority wants to change that, Dr. Minz or KDHE or this board, we would clearly do what that authority says. But right now, the answer would be we'd vaccinate them.
Okay, so at one point, we had talked about only Sedgwick County residents being vaccinated in Sedgwick County, understanding this is a fluid, this is fluid, so I get it. I just want to make sure that we're clear, because that could be a point of contention. So I just, I want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible about how this might be changing. The other thing is congregate settings. You have it in 2A, 2B, and 2C. I would, I would like to suggest to have, who are those 4,000 people in 2A? Who are the additional ones in 2B and 2C? I think for transparency's sake, we should have those broken out.
Well, I agree, Commissioner. We've talked about that. There's a lot of different kinds of congregate settings, and a group of adults with disabilities represents one, a jail population represents another, and there's everything in between. So I think that the reason we put it in each of the phases, they're all important, but which ones we do, and as Tim mentioned, what strategy we use to get them vaccines efficiently will be discussed. But we will be putting further definition to that over the next week or two.
Okay, so it will be broken out, like listed out on a sheet like this that is available to the public for everyone to see? Okay. Thank you, those are my questions. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple little points here. I'm on the Kansas Vaccination Prioritization Document, and it does list the five phases. And in Phase 2, it says persons age 65 and plus, congregate settings, high-contact critical workers. And then up above, it talks about being flexible, and talks about we're going to move through the phases, prioritizing the vaccination of current phase populations to maximize the speed under federal supply constraints. Anyway, there's a lot of good information on here, but as I read the details in Phase 2, again, I do agree generally with the strategy that you've asked us to follow in terms of, generally speaking, I think those that are older probably have some higher risk, just simply because of their age. I agree with that. But I might point out here, it doesn't really list a prioritization, it is not clear that it's listing priorities from top to bottom. Just like the CDC document, it lists a group of folks, it's not intended to be a priority, because even in the CDC guidelines, it actually puts age 75 and above below some folks who are obviously, I mean, to me, to me, it's clear by reading the document, there's not a priority intended, not priority interpretation intended, by the way it was written. I'm not so sure it's intended to be a priority, we should interpret this as a priority list from top to bottom necessarily either. And I think, again, I think to the extent the state may not have defined exactly what's the next thing on the list, looks to me like some counties may just take Phase 2 and say, we're going to do all of Phase 2. And I think it would be in compliance with KDHE. And I think maybe that's why we're seeing disparities between, from county to county, and how they're handling this. I mean, Reno County, you could be in any of these, any of these categories, and we got a vaccination, vaccination in Reno County.
Well, I think I said earlier that within Phase 2, the county can decide what the priority is, they just can't move from phase to phase. So yes, different counties may be approaching this list differently.
Okay.
I'm not saying Reno County's is exactly like this.
All right. And then finally, I'd just say this, you know, we talk about 30,000 manufacturing, aviation manufacturing workers, for example. That's a pretty big group, and I don't know that we would, excuse me, necessarily think of everybody in that entire category as having the same risk. It almost, we almost need to have a policy statement, or some type of a statement that says, for folks that have a lot of interface with other people, it depends how much you're exposed to other people, you're a higher risk if you have a lot of exposure to other people. If you work by yourself, and you don't work with a lot of other people, your risk is naturally going to be lower. So we would encourage those that have the higher risk to step forward and get the vaccine first, and those that have the lower risk to maybe delay their, even though they could legally, you know, they could exercise the option and get their vaccine early, we would ask them to assess their risk and maybe let others that have a higher risk go in front of them. Just a statement that says, within that population, some folks have higher risk and some folks have lower risk, we would like to have them self-regulate, if you will, and place themselves in the line where it makes sense.
I don't think we have any objection to working with the administration of those companies to help define what those employees would be, so.
And that comment could be applied to any of these categories, frankly. Thank you.
We did that very, we did that with K-12, for example. We left it to the administration to within their groups, exactly what you just said, their who's maybe elderly or who's at risk, and that group decided who goes first. We would do the same thing with all of these positions. That's a good point.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez has a question.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to make one point, because that, I mean, I hear from so many people, right, that Sedgwick County is doing things different than other counties, and I think it's really important to make the clarification that Sedgwick County and Johnson County are completely different than other smaller counties, because if they're getting more of the vaccine per population, it's easier to just get everybody at once. I know Johnson County, I believe, opened it immediately to 65 and older as we've kind of stepped down. And so I think, you know, our Health Department has done a very good job on getting, getting that in the way we have, but I do think it's important to make that clarification between Sedgwick and some of our smaller counties, because, I mean, we're one of the biggest, and that's part of this.
So in that spirit, the KDHE has said, in terms of that criteria of keeping your economy going, that's going to be different from county to county. Ford County doesn't have manufacturing, but they have a lot of meatpacking, so they might want to move meatpacking way up there. So they're letting the counties decide, what's your industry that you really need to put a priority on to keep things going, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great point, and thanks for reiterating that. Okay, Doctor, I don't see any other questions. Is there anything that we as a county commission can do to make you and Tim and Adrian's life better?
I don't have anything to ask of you at this point. I think it goes without saying that we're very pleased to see the direction of the case numbers, and we're hoping that continues, and let's hope this thing is winding down, but we'll see. Thank you very much.
One more question from Commissioner Dennis. Dr. Minz, again, thank you. I guess my main question is, deals with the order. I know that that's not what we're talking about today, but we're down to 3.7%, and that's a rolling 14-day average. If you look at the daily average, we're a little over 2%. We've got at least a fifth of the people here in Sedgwick County that have either had the vaccine or have had the COVID, and so they've got antibodies. I just need to know what the end game is. What is the data that we're going to look at to see when we're going to do away with orders? We just saw yesterday that the governor of Texas has eliminated all requirements and said that it's a personal responsibility, which I truly agree that part of this is a personal responsibility. We've seen other states that don't have any orders, Florida and so forth, so I don't know what to tell the people. I probably got 20 emails right now asking that very question, and so I just need to know how to respond to that when they send me an email and saying, what is the end game? Thank you, Dr. Minz.
This virus has fooled us before. We've seen peaks and valleys over the last year, and we saw the largest peak we've ever seen in November, and we were at a crisis. And I'm so thankful that we were able to get it under control, I hope partly because the crisis convinced a number of our populations, it's time to get serious about the personal behaviors that will help bring us down, and I think we've been successful. But I don't know what the future holds. We've had other cases where the numbers went down, and then they just came right back up. And I don't think any scientist I've talked to knows exactly what is affecting this up-and-down peaks that we've seen. But my hope is, if we see consistent low numbers, the next order, this current order expires the 20th of this month, and we will look at the numbers at that time, and if they're still low, I think we could make some substantial changes. However, I will say, any changes will be made will be made on the best medical information I can get, and I will not make them on political issues. And unfortunately, I think some of our neighboring states have allowed politics to get into the major component of the decision, over and above the medical advisement they're getting from national and local experts. So I, too, want this to be over. I'm tired of it. I am so happy to see the numbers lower. I hope with all my heart that the numbers just stay down low, and we can just phase out the order completely soon. But I also have to realize, this virus has fooled me before, and we have worked hard to get the community to understand the importance of physical distancing, mask wearing, and all that, and I think that has contributed to our numbers being low. And I want to emphasize that probably, even if the order expires for everything else, I would be reluctant to lift the order on the social distancing, mask wearing, and all that. I think it's way too soon to give up on that, and that's not just my opinion.
Well, Doctor, thank you. I appreciate that answer. Like I say, I'm certain that all of the commissioners have been getting emails here recently, especially after what's happened down in Texas and some of the other states, and we're all going to have to be providing answers back to those emails. And that's why I brought this up today, is that we need the best advice that we can get from not only you, but the Medical Society of Sedgwick County. We listen, I know you listen to the CDC, you listen to KDHE. You get information from a lot of places, and then as the medical officer give us guidance. But at some point, we, as the elected Board of Health, we're going to, we are responsible to the community, and they're asking us questions, and we have to be able to answer those.
I would point out, though, and I don't want to rehash history, but as you might recall, last spring, when we were really worried about this thing peaking up pretty badly, we really pushed hard, harder than even the current order is. And by the end of May, the numbers were down, and at that point, we decided to lift the order and just recommend to the public that they abide. And this virus fooled us. The numbers started going up, and by July, they were up. And I don't want to be fooled again, but that doesn't mean I'm going to insist that the order be effective until June 30th. If the numbers stay low, I hope we can lift as many of the restrictions as possible, realizing that if I am fooled again, that we're going to have to pivot back.
Well, March marks a year that we've been involved in this.
You don't need to remind me.
No one knew what the Board of Health was a year ago.
No one knew who I was a year ago.
Well, thank you very much for your help.
Thank you all.
Commissioner Lopez?
Just one, a couple of really quick things. I think it's important, because I've been getting emails, too, about Texas and Florida and all these other states that don't have these mandates in place, their numbers are still rising. Like, you know, we just got to that, where we're feeling good, our hospitals aren't overwhelmed, but that's not the case in these other states. And so I think it's really important that, you know, we continue doing what we've been doing. I love that we're able to start opening back up, but I think if we do too much too quickly and we overwhelm our hospitals again, I mean, that's just not, it's just not going to be fair to them. They finally have a little bit of a break, which has been so needed, and so we need to make sure that we're still doing everything that we can to not go through that again. And then the last point, real quick, because I have, oh, gosh, I'm going to forget what I was going to say. Oh, the antibodies, I've heard that a lot, too, and how can we include that into the numbers and the data we have? But I think it's really important to also remember with antibodies that, I mean, you could have a cold and then test positive for antibodies, so there's a lot of false positives that might not necessarily be accurate, so just keeping that into consideration as we move forward and look at that, too.
I'll just say one last thing. Thank you for reminding me. I thank the Health Department, and I really sincerely do think they're doing a fantastic job. But our healthcare workers were pushed to the limit in November. They were at the breaking point, and I'm so glad that we got these numbers down. ICUs still have patients, we have over 21 patients, the ICU still, but it's way down, and our healthcare workers are getting some rest that they badly need, because it was very, very hard on them. So I'm going to thank them for what they've done, and I know you previously thanked them, but we haven't thanked them since the November crisis. I call it a crisis. It was, so I will get out of here. So I, don't delay your meeting any longer.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. This isn't necessarily a question for you, but I do want to make some comments based on Commissioner Dennis's leading to this topic. But I would not term this as political. I don't think this is a political issue. I think it's a constitutional issue. Senate Bill 149, which would cause a county to have to reimburse property taxes based on a forced shutdown or capacity limitation by a county, that's a real possibility. I, I don't know the answer to this question. Maybe, maybe one of the people in this room can answer the question, but what part of our, what percentage of our state, how many counties of our state have not had a health order since July or so, since House Bill 2016 passed? Do we know?
Commissioner, I do know that Kansas Health Institute has some information on that and maybe KAC does as well. We'll do some research and see if we can get that to you.
Thank you. I would point out, for example, the largest geographic county in the state of Kansas is Butler County. It's also pretty populous compared to a lot of other counties in our state. They have not had a health order going back to House, when House Bill 2016 passed, they got rid of the health order right off the bat. So Andover, which is just to our, just to the east, in fact, I would say there, you almost can't tell when you drive from Wichita to Andover because the line is imaginary almost unless you're looking at a map. But they've not had a health order. And, and on it goes. You know, I look at the data in California versus Florida, and I would say there's a, or you might even look at, you know, New York, South Dakota, you might look at a number of other states. One thing I've noticed, it seems to me like there's very little correlation between the health orders of those states and the data trends of those states. The data trends look very similar. And I would tell you that, I might point out, the data trends in Kansas look a little bit like the data trends in other parts of the country. There's, there seems to be a little bit of a lag. For example, New York was much further into this pandemic before Kansas was. Back in March of last year, when we first passed the, the first stay-at-home order, we only had one case of coronavirus in Sedgwick County. Clearly, we are much more higher risk today than we were on March 23rd of 2020, but we didn't know that back then. We didn't know what we were dealing with. We didn't, we weren't sure how much risk was coming at us. And so we were very conservative and we, as a community, as a, as a board, put health orders in place because we weren't sure what was coming at us. And we can second guess that all day long, but the point of the matter is, we didn't know what we know now. And I think that we know an awful lot about this now. In fact, we've changed, I would say we've probably changed the behavior of people forever. I think if there was never a health order ever again, many people will, will continue to wear masks when they feel like they need to. We see that in, in other parts of the world where people do that type of thing. Dr. Menz, last year, when he was talking about the first stay-at-home order, he made the comment the day before that, that many businesses have, have actually already, already pivoted by doing mitigations, by limiting hours, limiting, limiting gatherings and that type of thing. So a lot of folks, no matter what the health order says, are going to ignore the health order, both in terms of not wearing masks and doing what they want to do. And there's other people who do more than what the health order requires. We'll see people on both sides of the health order doing more or less than what the health order is supposed to, is supposed to ask them to do. Having said that, the fact is, we don't have, I'm having trouble correlating. I know people said, well, in November, things were bad and we, we really dug in and did some things differently. Again, those were, those were national trends that happen everywhere. And I'm having a hard time correlating the health order to the data trends because we see so many examples of, that are, that do things differently and their data trends look much like ours do. So having said that, I'm looking at our actual data. And I'm, I am concerned about Senate Bill 149. If that was to pass right now, it, it might, it might not be retroactive to January 1st of 2020, as it's currently stated. But even if they make it just perspective from this point forward, we've known about this bill for a month now. And the basis of the bill is that we're, we're limiting people's businesses' freedom, which is a constitutional idea that, you know, based on the, for example, the 14th Amendment of the, of the US Constitution, that we're, we're taking away their right to property without due process, without just compensation. The reality is, we need to be very careful when that happens. And, and if it was based in, you know, data that said our community is threatened by the pandemic today, like we were back in March of last year, we would have a very hard decision to make. But now, right now, our daily rate, I just calculated this a minute ago, our daily rate, not counting the 14-day rolling average, but our daily rate yesterday was 2.3% positive. And our hospital numbers, our status shows good. It doesn't mean there's not some folks in the hospital struggling with COVID-19. There, there are. But the reality is, what's the data that causes us to continue a restrictive health order? I'm having trouble finding that data. I know there's concern and there's caution. And even that Dr. Menz just said, if we were to do something different and the data got much worse, we would have to pivot perhaps and do something different again. But I would like to, I would like to be a little bit more bullish in our, in our policy, moving towards more freedom, because we have data now. We have so much more understanding now of this, of this, of this, of the risk of COVID-19. And I think Dr. Commissioner Dennis will, he's done some, some good work on this, but I think that he would, he would say, you know, what percentage of our community has antibodies or vaccines or are very, very young and don't seem to have a, an incidence of COVID-19? It's a good portion of our community is already there. And plus, we're moving to longer daylight hours, people moving outdoors. I think these data trends are likely to continue. And with that in mind, I would love to see us move away from the health order. A couple of things we could do, we can move, certainly in light of Senate Bill 149, we could certainly, you know, basically give businesses the right to operate freely. I think that would be a good move. That means removing, removing the gathering limits and occupancy limits. We could continue to encourage social distancing and hand washing and mask wearing, rather than making that a mandate. So those are some things we could do, and I would like to see us move in that direction. I don't know if there's support amongst the board today to do any of those things, but I think the conversation needs to happen. I think we'd have to be looking very closely at Texas data and find out in three weeks from now, what's their data look like then compared to now? Because that is a very good thing we should study. And I think there's other states. I would tell you that Florida and South Dakota, their, their numbers look like ours. And there was an argument that the Super Bowl was going to have a super spreader event. I haven't seen the data on that. And on it goes. And so the reality is, I think it's time for us to move forward to less restrictions as soon as possible, based on the fact that we don't have data to support what we're currently doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't want to extend this discussion too much longer. Joe Thomas has been very patient. Now he knows everything there is about vaccines. Pretty quick, we're going to learn a little bit about bids, boards and bids and contracts. But I just wanted to make one last point. I've been talking about antibody testing for some time. I did have an opportunity to speak with Andy Schlapp last Friday, face to face, and ask him if they could do antibody testing. He said they are working with Oxford, I believe, right now to add the ability to do an antibody test. I asked him how much that it would cost to add that to our, our current test, and he didn't have that number yet, but he should have it in the near future. But he said the nice thing about it is that that antibody test can break out and tell you if you've got the flu or tell you if you've got SARS. It, it will tell you what you've got if you're sick. So, and he said he can use the same samples that we're using now. So if we send a sample out there, he can test it and tell you whether you're positive or not. And he can also tell you if you have antibodies and if they're antibodies for COVID. So I just wanted to let you know, I've been pushing it for some time. It doesn't look like we can do it right now, but as soon as it sounds like WSU can do that, I, I do believe that that gives us the scope of, of the issue because it can tell us folks that already have antibodies. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other comment.
One more. Adrian's going to talk about volunteering at the site yet. Adrian, are you online?
I am. Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burns, Sedgwick County Health Director. So we have had a wonderful response from the community in regards to signing up for Medical Reserve Corps. And we have, we have two, two categories now for Medical Reserve Corps because that is established, Medical Reserve Corps is established for people to sign up to volunteer during disasters and ongoing. Well, we know that there are people in the community that are passionate about helping at the vaccine sites. And so we, we have created a category so they don't need to do the, the training. They are just doing the required background check and HIPAA. And so that's making a lot of people happy. So I just wanted to let you know that. We have, at the clinic this week, we have 32 volunteers that will be at the clinic. And for volunteers, we break it into the option of six different shifts, anywhere from two hours to six hours. Now, some of the volunteers choose to work all day. And so out of that, 32 volunteers, we have 77 shifts amongst those 32 volunteers. Now, we have a total of 175, medical and non-medical, that are ready to go. And we have like 150 more that were going through the process. So we are really good on, on volunteers and we may not, we may not get to a lot of those volunteers. Well, we're not going to get to them right now and it may be a while, but we know that we're going to be giving vaccines for months to come. So we, we may get to them, but we are just really appreciating the response and it helps us immensely because we have people volunteering to be vaccinators, people volunteering to help us with line flow or, so it's just been, it has been really heartwarming. And as far as getting vaccinated, so right now, because of the amount of people that we have wanting to volunteer, we're really focusing on those volunteers that can commit to at least once a week ongoing. And anyone that volunteers has the option of getting vaccinated because they are going to be around a lot of people. And we offer that at the end of the, at the end of their shift because everyone, every volunteer, every contractual worker that comes into the clinic, the contractual workers are also working a couple of different shifts, they see the site supervisor. And so that site supervisor lets them know, if you'd like, if you'd like to get your first dose, then, you know, let us know and we'll take care of you at the end of the shift. And so that is the solid process at, at this time. And except for maybe one falling through the cracks, it, it's been a, it's been a good process. We, we don't ordinarily vaccinate someone before their shift because, for two reasons. It doesn't give them any immediate protection. And the second reason is if they have a reaction, even if it's anxiety or, you know, because there's been hardly any reactions out of all these doses, then we wouldn't have that person during the day. So most volunteers, if not all, have wanted the vaccine and we make sure that they get that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Adrian. Appreciate the report. Commissioner Lopez?
I just have, I want to just make a clarification, just because I, I feel like I've gotten this question so many times. So anybody who volunteers, they have to work once a week to be guaranteed the vaccine? Or anybody who volunteers at the end of their shift is guaranteed a vaccine?
Well, we, we likely at this point won't be utilizing volunteers that just want to volunteer one time because we have so many volunteers that are registering that can commit to a regular, that can commit to a regular schedule. And so anyone that is coming in volunteering, we know that, that they're saying, hey, I'd like to help every Saturday, or I can do Monday and Wednesday. And so when, when they come in, they're vaccinated.
And that's not, for those individuals, it's not if we have a few extra at the end of the night, then you could potentially get one. It's if you're here and you're scheduling to work, repeatedly, you will get one.
No. If, if they want it, then we'll open up another vial. Now, if there's only, you know, one volunteer and we don't have any other vaccine drawn up, then we'll ask them if it's okay that we vaccinate them during their next shift so that we don't have five doses that we then need to spend time calling people to come in and get that in someone's arm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Adrian, thanks. Don't see any other questions. Appreciate. And obviously, we extend our thanks to all the volunteers and the contractors. And it's, it appears to be smooth and we'll let you know if we hear otherwise. So thanks again, Adrian.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Tom, on this section? Okay. I don't think we need any motions to receive and file. It was just a good discussion. We, we did a motion and approval on the letter. We'll get to work on that. And so with that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 25th, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director.
Hi, Joe.
Good to be here. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on February 25th results in three items. Item number one, you're probably wondering, you've seen this before. This item was originally brought to you on January 13th and approved. However, after that meeting, it was discovered that there were some other necessary items that were not included in the original table. So to delineate the other line items, we issued another addendum to all vendors, had them respond, and then turned around and brought it back to bid board, and now we're bringing it to you today. And you'll notice those items are items nine through 19. So with that in mind, we're asking the Commission to accept the revised bid from Harry Street Carpet and establish contract pricing for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. Thank you for allowing me to give that narrative. Item number two is on-call door services for various departments. And this recommendation is to accept the bids from Derby Overhead Company and DH Pace Company, which is doing business as Overhead Door Company, which taught DH Pace Company, and establish contract pricing for the rates listed above for a period of three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item this morning is the janitorial and sanitation supplies and equipment for various departments. This recommendation is to establish a contract with Brady Industries based on the Omni Partners Contract 202329. And this is good through the initial period of May 31st, 2023. And it allows an option to renew for one additional two-year period through May 31st, 2025. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of the items.
Okay. Are there any questions? I don't see any, Joe, so I'll make a motion that we approve the bid board as presented. There's a second. Motion and a second to accept the bids and contracts. No other comment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Thanks for the committee, all the work they do. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent items J through T.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept consent items J through T. Any other, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I don't see any questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Good morning, Chairman.
Hello, Akim. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Communications Director. Just to give you a brief update on our legislative platform. This week seems kind of quiet in a lot of ways. On the note that you've got there, the page in front of you, this Friday is going to be something called a turnaround day. This essentially is the last date in which non-exempt bills may be considered in the chamber, in which they were introduced. This does not affect us. We did really good. We, early on, presented our, our legislative platform to Jason and he was able to kind of work those bills early on. So we're looking really good on that aspect. Senate Bill 13, this bill, if you guys remember, this was our property taxation bill. This bill is still in the House General Order. This is on something called below the line, so it will not be debated this week because of that. So we're just kind of waiting to see where that goes. We'll get an update from Jason and his team here in the next couple of days to kind of see when that will happen. see when that will happen. Senate Bills 52 and 53, both of these bills are still in the House Local Government Committees. Jason and his team will be asking the House Leader to schedule these hearings, so both simultaneously, one after another, on the same day. We believe these hearings won't be any earlier than March 15, so it'll probably be that date or later. So that's kind of where we are on that. There is an update to Senate Bill 100. This has to do, and it's not on your sheet there, excuse me for that. This has to do with Commissioner Howell's license bill. I know he had kind of brought this up early on. This was reintroduced into committee, so this one essentially does not have a deadline. So lawmakers will continue to work that bill so that one doesn't fall under the turnaround Friday deadline. I'm not sure if Mike has any updates he'd like to give, but I'll stand for any questions that you may have of me.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the update. As you know, our top issue is behavioral health, and I think there are several bills that are working through right now that deal with behavioral health. Do you have any updates on any of those?
I don't. One thing I can tell you, Commissioner, is that lawmakers are working through the budget process. And so at the end of the month, Jason is kind of working with lawmakers to include funding for us as well. I know Joan Tammany does have a couple of bills that she will be testifying or has testified on. I can find out where those are and then get you an update through email, Commissioner.
Okay. And the other issue, Commissioner Howell brought it up earlier, is the bill on refunding property tax. Do we have any update on how that's moving?
I don't. Mike, I'm not sure if maybe you have any comment on that, but I don't.
Commissioner Dennis, as far as I know, that bill's not going anywhere. I haven't seen any movement on that bill at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think Jason, on that one, responded that the original bill that Mike confirms is probably not going anywhere, but there might be an adjusted bill in the Senate that, when he described it to me, it was not even really very close to what this one was. So anyway, okay. Hakeem, thanks. I don't see any other questions.
Good morning.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have to receive and file? Motion to receive and file. I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Motion to receive and file the report from Hakeem. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Does the Commission have anything to report from their committees that they serve? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to thank all Commissioners and the community. We had about 80 individuals who joined the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition Task Force update last week. We also have a couple of committees that are in the works with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, Access to Care, which reduces barriers so patients can get services they need when they need them. Coordination, Communication, and Collaboration is a task force designed to create a system that relies on improved communication, coordination, and collaboration among service providers. That's huge so we don't operate in our silos. And then the Workforce Task Force, talking about having enough employees to meet demands in mental health, substance abuse, social work, and other behavioral professions. So I'm really excited that we all were able to attend that. If any of you would like to join one of those task forces, the Access to Care, Coordination, Communication, Collaboration, or the Workforce, please let me know. I'm happy to get you on those groups. They meet monthly. If you guys are interested in looking over what the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition does, we just launched a website, which is MHA, or, excuse me, MHSACoalition.org, and it tells who's on there. It gives resources. It has a lot of information around the priority paper that we produced, local studies on information. So it has the 2019 High Utilizers Study, also the Community Needs Assessment, and also the 2018 Project Wichita Survey that lists mental health as the number six priority in our community. So it's just a wealth of information. If you guys have any additional comments or questions, I would be happy to answer them. But this is, we're really moving the ball. I'm excited that we had so much participation from local leaders in our community. And so please let me know if you'd like to serve on any of those task forces. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thanks for that update. A very successful meeting. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, two real brief updates. First, the zoo. If you've been reading the newspaper, we just had a baby rhinoceros that was born to a BB. And it's, I believe, the only offspring of the father who just passed away last September, unfortunately. But that was great news. And the other thing is that the entrance is coming along very well. So here, we're coming up on the 50th anniversary of the zoo. We'll be, all the Commissioners will be invited out to a nice ribbon cutting on the zoo here in the near future. Another committee that a number of us serve on is WAMPO. At the last meeting in February, I was elected the chairman of WAMPO, and Becky Tuttle was elected as the vice chairman. We are doing a little bit of reorganizing on who's going to be on the executive committee and so forth. But I look forward to the next two years serving on WAMPO as chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I'll just mention that yesterday afternoon, I was able to join Commissioner Cruz and watched her help cut a ribbon at the Windstar?
Crosswind.
Crosswind Casino up in Park City. A big turnout. A lot of Park City officials were there and other officials from around, and it was a nice celebration. We got to meet the ownership and the management, and I think they have a commitment to the community as well as, obviously, running their business. They have about 11 acres is designated for gaming, but they've got another 25 or so acres that they're going to develop with business development. So good stuff along I-35 corridor up there.
Yeah, I can't believe I forgot that. Thank you for mentioning that. The jobs there to that area, and also Chief Billy Friend mentioned how important it was for the Wyandotte Nation to be involved in the community and to be a supporter of the community and to work with the community. He did mention, you know, that was one of their top priorities. So after the ribbon cutting, both Chairman Meister and I had an opportunity to speak with him. We're looking forward to the partnership, especially since our fire district up there is literally right next door. So exciting times in Park City, a lot going on up there.
Okay. Thank you for adding to that. I don't see any other lights on, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other?
Does anybody have anything other that they would like to mention? Don't see any. And we do not have a, oh, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say, I have, we've actually had two Citizen Advisory Board meetings so far under District 5, and that's actually going quite well. Wanted to encourage anybody who would like to participate in that. If you sign up to the newsletters for the Commissioners, at least on mine, I can let you know the details as to when the next meeting will be. But I've really enjoyed getting to know those folks on that committee. They're doing a tremendous job. I have historically, for the last six years, been doing a coffee on Fridays, and since the pandemic began, I have not really done these coffees. I've only had maybe one or two because of the pandemic threat and all that stuff. So I would just say, the numbers are encouraging to me. I'm going to go ahead and do my next coffee. It's an in-person meeting. It's ad hoc. You can come and go as you please. There is no agenda. We don't take minutes. We simply chat. Whatever you guys want to bring up, if you're interested in attending that, it's this Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And I have, it'll be at 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby. That is a gymnasium. So if you're interested in that, let me know. If you have any questions about that, reach out to me. But I do plan on having that coffee again this coming Friday. And then just as anecdotal information, which I thought, if you haven't seen it, I just think I'd like to highlight this. I think it's interesting. Cake TV put up an opinion poll on their Facebook page last night. I'm watching this just because I think it's interesting. And this is, again, back to Dr. Minz's point, this actually is political. This is based on opinion, not necessarily on data. But it's interesting, of our community that's responded to that poll, has been 4.3,000 respondents on that poll so far, and of them, it's almost a two-to-one ratio that they're anxious to see the health orders ended now. So I'm following that, just like to point that out. I think it's interesting. If you want to know what the constituents think in this community, I think we can look at that poll as at least one example of something we might want to reflect on. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other comments at this time. So Madam Clerk, next item? Although we don't have any. And we do not have an executive session.